All right.
Hey, we are back.
Thank you very much. Welcome back. We'll continue with our agenda for May 16th. We move on to number five, delegations and petitions. We've received a petition from in regards in regards to the reopening of the burner office. The council will receive that petition. And it will come back for discussion at a future meeting in consultation with Mr. Patrón. We believe that there is a representative or somebody who would like to speak on the issue. And we are going to put that media, sorry, that item forward for the meeting in July. Okay. And I guess there's no motion for that. That just moved on. So we'll thank you very much for the petition from people who signed it. Committee of the whole, we move on to public works. I will pass the chair to councillor Donier and we'll take it from here. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, so first item for discussion was in regards to the petition we received from Monsieur Paulacquet in regards to repairs to Abitibi Road and Montreal Road. So I'll open it up for any questions or discussions.
Our manager is on his way. He's going to propose to be done as well. Oh, I'm sorry. I went through that food panel instead. We'll just take a slight pause here while we wait for Mr. Remiar to join us.
I don't know. I suppose that, you know, the people handle the question like the folks ask the questions.
I went for Ryan and I had a look there, so it's bad. I think it's a bit more than just bottles, but just wondering if anybody had any questions? No? So can we just skip that one? And when Mr. Remiar gets here, maybe he can comment on the subject?
Okay, yeah, if you want to move on to the other one. People wants to speak tonight as well.
Since I'm the chair, I'm going to skip that one. Make them allow.
Here they come. Welcome, gentlemen. Nice to have you here.
Thank you, Lady. Happy to be here.
So Monsieur Remiar just let me breathe there. We just had a question in regards to the petition for Abitibi Road in Montreal. No councillor has any questions, but I just wanted to know if you have any comments or information to share with us.
Actually, I don't. So those, the streets mentioned are all on capital for this year. So I'm assuming it will address the concerns from that constituent.
Schedule?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
We don't have a schedule for that work, Phil?
We don't. The drainage works will be done by our crews.
Okay.
So I know that locates have been requested. As for the completion, we, since it's done with our internal crews, we do have other, you know, service requests to take care of. So we can't, you know, 100% dedicate to that project. But it will be done over the course of the summer for asphalt resurfacing prior to.
What is asphalt resurfacing also scheduled for those roads?
Correct. Yes.
Perfect. Any other questions at Conseil of PC?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. There is two bullet points regarding the rock outcrop will be encountered in exact quantities. So is there an idea? Because that's going to be extra money on top of the current.
Sorry, I thought we were talking about the Montreal Abitibi petition.
Oh, Montreal, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. Sorry.
I think that's our next topic. Sorry, councillor Casey.
Any other questions by the conseil? So we'll move on to the next one, which is the expansion of water services on the road. So I'll pass it on to Monsieur Remiar for descriptions because we should have all made a package.
Good. Thank you through your Mr. Chair. So yes, I did prepare a staff report for the CAO, Intern Council. So you do have unit rates. Those are current unit rates that we have been seeing. To give you an idea on the overall cost, minus the geotechnical report has not been completed. So without a formal geotechnical report, we do not know how much rock will be encountered. So absolutely, we, you know, if we were to go ahead with the project, that would have to be done. But I just thought I would bring the current total to council for, you know, discussion because it is significant. And is this something that would be economically feasible or amenable to the proponents involved? And so back to you, Mr. Chair.
I'll see you, Monsieur Remiar. So I'll open it up for questions. So you say we?
Do we know approximately through you, Mr. Chair, do we know approximately how many households are on that street that would benefit from?
At least Melanie, if you had the exact numbers. I have some numbers, but I mean, we shouldn't write these in stone. I think there's 34 potential properties, plus or minus.
In that range.
In that range.
Go ahead.
I was just going to add that typically a capital improvement through, or Mr. Chair. Three, typically a capital improvement is calculated based on the frontage. So it's not like a flat rate applied per property. So it's based on the frontage, on a per meter frontage. So via value, it's basically the meters, both sides of the road, the cost divided by that number of meters and then multiplied by the number of meters that each person has. That's how it is legally applied.
Okay, thank you. I'll see you, Restool.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, no numbers in stone, but going by the petition that we received, it looks like there's 27 addresses there that these were circulated to and there was eight in favor of. There's lots who haven't responded, but it sounds like about eight of 27 say yeah. You know, I guess, I know for just discussing this now, I know any decision probably go into at least next years. For the total near a million dollars, tens of dollars.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, that you need 50% of the frontage to carry the petition for the local improvement.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Chair. I'll see you, Restool.
It sure does.
Perfect. Madam Mayor.
Okay, and then with the 50%, if you had the 50% frontage in agreement for a local improvement, that improvement still gets charged 100% of houses. Okay, so and water right now on Dutrezak and on Nipissing, does it come all the way down near the corner? So we're just, we're just crossing it or looping it?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how far down does the sanitary go on Nipissing to Aubrey?
Correct.
And do we have sanitary on Dutrezak?
We do not.
Thank you. Thanks for my questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll see you, Bené.
Yes, Madam, Monsieur Doni. It shows the $3,000 times 34 potential users. The 3,000 is based on what?
On unit rates, current unit rates. So projects that we have in our community where we're doing water and sewer capital. So unit rates for servicing a water service are around the $3,000 mark per service. For, maybe I can clarify. For example, if we're doing a section of John Street, personally, between a certain block and there's, there's 10 homes. Well, the contractor will give us a unit rate per home, how much it'll cost per home. So that 3,000, that's, you know, times the 34 potential properties. So that would cost, that's the cost to bring not only the water main, but also the services off the main into property line. That's that, captures that cost.
So that would cover the whole cost of the project?
The number at the bottom would cover the cost of the project minus you don't have rock removal and geotechnical report, as well as there's other, you know, incidental costs like contracted men, contract supervision, which are usually somewhat minimal compared to the overall cost. But those are all, yeah, there is additional cost. I just thought we'd bring kind of the meat and potatoes so that council can discuss and see what they're up against or what the potential property owners are up against.
Okay, conseil, good. Thank you. Conseil, say Louis.
Just through you, just if people don't reply, so we haven't not received, place them in the box again. If they don't reply, is it a no?
So there's really three different ways the municipality could approach this project and funding this project. One is the municipality says, you know what, we're going to do it under our own dollar. We're going to use capital dollars to assign to it and we're going to budget for it in some future year when we've got a million dollars of funding. The way that Ms. Kishan was talking about earlier is the local improvement. And so that if, if we don't have 50% of the frontage or when we take this number back out, it's a number and we don't have 50% of the frontage that want to do the project, then yes, the project just dies. The third option is that if council can impose a local improvement by bylaw or residue. Yeah, that they can impose a local improvement on residents, whether they like it or not. You know, so that if you, you know, if we came through this and council wanted to do it and we didn't have the 50% frontage or we had some issue, but council wanted to do it, council could still do it as a local improvement, but they're forcing it down rather than accepting a petition on it. So really, what I guess Mr. Mayor is sort of looking for direction on is, you know, whether we break these numbers back out, take it out to the petitioner, see if we still have a petition, see whether council wants us to actually go and do a full in-depth numbers analysis that, you know, what the municipality's cost to see. Get really hard numbers on things or, you know, what your thoughts are. I don't know if anyone has had contact with the residents, if you have a feel for what the residents are expecting or, you know, how he proceeds from here.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll see you, Bené.
Yes, Madam, Mr. Chair. Because right now all we have is ATS. Right? That's what we got on the page. That's it. So I would suggest we spend the money right now unless there's more appetite from the people.
Conseil, Restool?
Yeah, again, just for the discussion, if it is, I don't think, I won't speak for them, but I think it seems like a very high cost if it's something that's pushed on to the taxpayers. I, you know, expert in numbers, but a quick calculation I got came to almost 25 grand household. That's not the full suite. That's just water itself. I don't know if you have 34 happy taxpayers if that bill came in, who want to add with this.
Even at the 50% also.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Even at a 50% frontage on agreement, and that's still 50% of the people who are not in agreement. And, you know, for many people, having an improvement fee forced upon them, that could be 25 and probably closer to $30,000 is quite extreme. And Canal Road also falls quite a bit south. Like there's, it's not like it's ripe for development at this very moment. And yeah, I don't, it just seems like a lot of money. I mean, I don't think it's something our taxpayers can be on the hook for and.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I did have some contact with just one resident in the area. And that's why I was brought forward. But I'm sure, once you mentioned that option of potentially bringing it back with the numbers, it might kind of, you know, we have ABSs now, but as what was just mentioned, I think that number may even drop a little bit. If it was a capital project, maybe there'd be more strategic locations that spending money like this. So that as well is an option for me. I'm not in support of that because perhaps there'd be a different area in town where we could run this line, the water line similar, and try and spark some development in another area. I don't know if Canal Road, as you mentioned, would be one of the prime locations for that. I just thought I'd mention that. It was, it was brought forward as an option, but I'd like to see, once these numbers are out there, if the interest would be there at all.
But I'll see, conseil, you go. Would you like to ask you? Any more questions? More comments, Monsieur Remiar?
Those are all my comments. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I just, I heard a little bit of, no, we think this should just die versus maybe send the numbers back out to people. Are we, you know, do we want Mr. Remiar to send these numbers out to the folks and said, hey, this is what it's going to be? Or do we want to just look at if we don't have the petition, it dies and we're?
I think the petition doesn't have enough support. So technically, unless they come back and they have over 50% of the people that are actually signing in an agreement with the petition, I think that's where it should go back.
So it's not a die-in?
It's not a die-in at this moment. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Good one. Yeah, I'll see you.
Through you, just the one thing I might just send the page of the agenda to the one who submitted the petition and kind of explain what was talked about here and maybe share the link to this video as well. So we can hear the comments from our public works manager and we send you all our comments.
Yep.
Otherwise, yeah, it would die.
Okay. We'll move to that. That's why I bring it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Doni. Next on the agenda, we have community services. And for that discussion, I will pass the chair to councillor Revard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first, that's 6.2A is Beach and Parks bylaw. And we have a draft that's brought forward for council's consideration. And Monsieur Plaigne, would you like to elaborate on it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one point of clarification. I know on the agenda, we've got beaches and parks. It is only a beaches bylaw that's presented to you. We do plan on coming back with a bylaw that will put some thought into the use and regulation of our parks and playgrounds and whatnot. So at this point, it's beaches. So we have had in the past some disturbances, some complaints, some concerns at our public beaches. And we felt that it'd be best to address it through bylaw. And hopefully, we're going to minimize the disturbances at our three beaches. We have in front of you a draft of a bylaw. I think it's pretty well self-explanatory. We think that covers most of the major concerns we've seen over the past couple of years. One thing that I do want to point out is hours. So between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, the beach area would be planted. And anyone caught at our beach area would be considered trespassing. I believe our CAO have had, has had a discussion with the local OPP as far as next steps. If and when council adopts this bylaw, we would look at advising the OPP of the bylaw. We need to bring back set fines as well to council to consider. And once that's approved, obviously, we provide those to the OPP and our bylaw enforcement officer as well for enforcement purposes. We'll also, once councils adopted the bylaw, we will put proper signage at all of our beaches and do a public education component to inform our residents and our visitors to our area as well. I leave it to you, Mr. Chair, to proceed with discussions and questions.
As Monsieur Plaigne just mentioned, the floor is open to comments or questions. Madam Mayor?
So I just have, I have one question in regards to a specific 6.1 under animals. When it says enter any swimming areas that roped off swimming areas? Or are the animals not permitted in the water anywhere at a public beach?
That's correct. It's not a roped off area. We do not have roped off areas at our public beaches. It would be to prevent animals. They have to be leashed. And it's prevent them because we've had instances where we've had complaints where there's a number of children swimming and we've got dogs and running through and it's creating concerns and issues. So as soon as if our parks and beach area with an animal, domesticated animal, it must be on a leash at all times.
What if it's on a leash, but its toes are in the water?
Its what, sorry?
Its toes are in the water. As long as it's on a leash.
Well, we don't, we don't want animals to be mixing in the swimming areas where we have the public.
Oh. Any more questions? The chair, I forgot there. I guess to mention, would there be a possibility that, I know the Sturgeon Beach is a little small for that, but maybe that Clear Lake Beach have a designated spot where people could let their dogs drink from the lake or, you know, go in if they're on a leash?
To drink from the lake?
Oh, well, my, my dog loves it.
No, but anything's possible if you wish that we have a designated area.
Just to let them.
Yeah, yeah. But we can definitely, if this is council's wish, to have a designated section at our beaches so that dogs or cats or pets can access the water away from the public swimming areas. I think that could be something that we could look at.
Yeah, like that. And it would also maybe help the young families to stay in another area while the dogs may be to the left or to the right, or someone's cat. Any more questions, comments? Anything to do with bylaw?
I have a comment. Mr. Chair, it's actually, I think this is a really good idea. It's something that's been brought up a lot just through my interactions with residents who live on that road. There's already been a couple of issues, but I think this will nip it just in time for some. So I like this idea. Thank you.
Conseil, you go on here. Next question, regards to barbecues. It's getting very popular down south where they have charcoal barbecue like plates where you can actually do yours. And I saw on here charcoal is also prohibited. I understand propane barbecue and you have to bring in your own barbecue, but they supply the cooking area. You bring your own charcoal, light your fire, cook whatever you want and then you, because technically it's all going to burn and it's made into a, so I don't know if that could be an option, but I'm just wondering why we're like banning charcoal and everything else.
So, Mr. Chair, councillor, I believe what you're referring to would be some fixed barbecues that are provided by the municipality. That's something we could look at for future years as to designate an area. Like it's something that's probably easier to do at the Laclà beach because there's a lot of space. But to have that here, it would be, it would have to be off to the side. We have, like, I'm thinking of the Sturgeon Falls Beach, we've got tennis courts, we've got parking area, we've got beach volleyball. So we could look at designating and then possibly looking at having those types of barbecues, those fixed barbecues installed at our beaches. But that, I would recommend to council, that's something that we could bring back as a budgetary item for next year. And then again, public education promotion, we want to prevent forest fires as well or fires, period. And, and look at a safe way of doing it for years to come. But for this year, we were hoping to tackle some of the ongoing issues we've been seeing. And I agree that that's something that could enhance your experience at the beach and something you could look for for next year. And if we have to amend the bylaw, can be done at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess after that, I spent some time in living this weekend and they have some of those. And they seem pretty neat. I saw some charcoal in one of them, so it's a good idea. Let's see if that.
Thank you, Monsieur Remiar. Yeah, same thing. I was thinking about the barbecues. I don't know. I'm thinking of the beach camp I live there, not too far from our place.
That beach, that beach, Saint-Jean.
Sorry, yeah, yeah. I don't know. I think it would be a good idea for letting people bring their barbecue. They won't bring their big barbecue, obviously. They'll bring a small barbecue. And I don't, I don't think it makes a mess. I'm just thinking of those people that don't have, they don't know anybody who owns a cottage on the lake. You know what I mean? I don't think, I've never seen a problem there with barbecues. There probably not many that goes, but they're just one or two. It's, it's nice to go near the water and they can't afford it and they don't know anybody else. Just, just a thought.
Again, as a response to you, Mr. Chair, if council wishes to specifically identify charcoal barbecues as an allowable way of cooking food at the beach, it's, we can certainly amend the bylaw, bring it back to you for adoption, that amendment, and we can monitor to see if it's going to cause any issue.
Has it been a problem in the past?
As far as barbecues, I guess it's part of a greater overall issue. We also want to make sure that people are not leaving food because it does bring in animals and whatnot. And I guess we're mindful of not creating more issues such as forest fires or litter, you know, or. But this is, again, we've looked at best practices. We've looked at other bylaws in various municipalities. And this was a common regulation at our, or not our, but at local beaches to prevent the cooking devices at the beaches themselves.
So right now there's no bylaw on this?
Nope.
So that's why I'm asking. I've never seen a problem on that beach.
No, there's no bylaw.
That's why I'm asking. Is there a problem maybe more in Sturgeon? I don't know.
No answer. Councillor Restool had his hand up first.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just, I think, going back to some of the other bylaws that we've looked at. This is my, I think maybe it was the no cut. And so you put something in place, right? And you have something there. You come back in a year and reassess and see how things went. And I don't think we're going to create the perfect bylaw here, but we have to start somewhere, right? And I don't, my thought is if there's not a huge demand from the public to make sure we have barbecue areas on our public beaches and start with this and see. Because, you know, I don't want to be the party pooper, but I think there's more opportunity for challenges that arise from this. Like you mentioned with who's monitoring fires and who's doing this at night. And I don't always want to think the worst. I think there's great family opportunities there as well. But start somewhere and see where it goes. And if we see, you know, groundswell of residents saying we want this, and then maybe something to look at. Maybe use it as a pilot site on one of the beaches and go from there. But I think it's good and I'm a little bit excited because we finally can pass a bylaw and we have a bylaw enforcement officer. So it's like we're doing something. It's good to see. But I appreciate the work that's put into it. And I like the comment that you made where, you know, you guys don't just dream this up. You look at other bylaws that exist and take the best of what and see what consensus is around. So I just wanted to share those comments.
Mayor?
I tend to agree with councillor Restool. I do like the idea of offering people those opportunities. But specifically with barbecues, I would have a couple of concerns. I would actually want to get input from our fire chief before we allowed any kind of fuel burning appliances on our public property because is there potential liability issues for us? How does that impact, especially when you look at some of the beaches that are a little bit more remote or maybe have a longer response time from our fire department if something were to go wrong? And then the other issue being that, you know, usually several times during the summer, we are under some kind of fire ban. And then it becomes the responsibility of the municipality to make sure that those things are clearly communicated to our residents on the spot. We can't rely on the fact that they saw that there's a fire ban on Facebook. So then who, if we allow them, but then we have a fire ban, I would imagine that the fire ban would apply to having barbecues on the beach. And how do we make sure that residents are aware of the fire ban? And how do we make sure that residents are aware of the fire ban? It just, as Jamie said, it, it does, oh, sorry, as councillor Restol said, it does present, uh, uh, more challenges, um, and especially, uh, just in relation to public safety. So that would be my opinion on barbecues and, um, you know, I, I think it's a good point that, uh, when we pass new bylaws, um, we, we have the opportunity at any time to go back and make amendments to those if we find that there's one piece or one section that's not working, or staff finds that there's challenges, or enforcement finds there's challenges, we can always go back, um, and tighten things up or loosen things up. So, um, I, I, again, it's really nice, uh, work done on this by staff and I appreciate that. These are my thoughts on barbecues.
Thank you, councillor Restol. Consigliere Agnelli.
Last question and comment. Question, uh, how many public beach have we got?
Three.
Three, okay, so it's not, it's not all over the place, we just have three. And I don't think we should create a bylaw just to create a bylaw. We create a bylaw if there's a problem, to me. Like I say, I've never seen a problem with the beach converter, I don't know if you have? Do you have a, do you ever have a problem?
We, we have. We have overnight noise, parking issues, garbage issues, we, we do have problems at all three of our beaches.
Okay.
Uh, ETVs, motorized vehicles, loud, loudspeaker noise, so it's a, it's an ongoing occurrence and, and we have had concerns and, and complaints from nearby residents and what.
Yeah, with the park, uh, yeah, the rest, okay, thank you.
Anybody else for a question? I'd just like to close out there. I like the idea of the bylaw as well, because, oh, at the Clear Lake, when I try and launch my parents' seadoo, sometimes there's campers there at the boat launch, which is part of the beach, and you can barely turn around and what do you do, right? This is the only spot where you can launch a boat and it is an issue, so having a bylaw like this would help. And the thing with the barbecues, I believe, nobody should have a barbecue on the beach itself, but potentially, I really like the idea that consigliere Agnelli brought up and like they have in living, those charcoal barbecues, maybe in the, in the future we could set those up near a picnic table and it would add a, added value to that beach already that we have. And, you know, give a spot for families to go enjoy the day, cook a nice little meal on the charcoal barbecue, but that's like something we could look at in the future. Other than that, I really like, uh, really like the bylaw, thanks.
Thank you.
So are we, by show of hands, are we in agreement with this proposed bylaw? And as mentioned, in the future, if we think of any changes, maybe we could bring it back up and work on it then. And, uh, would we entertain a motion to break it? Take a break at this point?
Uh, I, I would say let's, let's wrap up. Services were closed and we all was ready, sorry, Madam Deschamps is ready to go. Um, but we have a community services update verbal.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, we thought it'd be, uh, an opportune time, just heading into the May long weekend to provide counsel and, uh, our residents updates on certain, uh, community services, uh, either operational matters or programs and, and events. Um, because I, I'm, I'm thinking that a lot of members of council are getting the same questions being asked pertaining to boat launches and, uh, Marina and, uh, parks and playgrounds and splash pads, so we thought it'd be best to just provide you with an update as to what's going on ahead of the long weekend. Municipal boat launches will all be available for public use with the exception of the, um, the museum boat launch. The water levels are extremely high. We ask that boaters launching their boats take, uh, appropriate caution. There are a lot of debris and logs out there, the water levels are high. For the, as for the museum, um, the ground is again too soft to allow trucks and, and boats to back up, so we will keep that one closed for the long weekend. Um, but all of our other boat launches, uh, in, in various number of communities are going to be available to the public. Boat launch, or boat launches where we have floating docks, the floating docks will not be installed. Anywhere where we have floating docks, so Levin, Cash Bay, Mini Haha Bay, um, will not be installed because of high water levels and, and so we, we're gonna delay that beyond the long weekend. As for the Marina, um, the Marina itself will be staffed this weekend. Boat slip renters, uh, or clients have been advised that the boat, the docks will not be in and boat slips for the season will not be available for the long weekend. Again, current debris, uh, high water levels is making it impossible for us to do it safely. Uh, our gas pump at the Marina will not be available as well, and there's already been public, uh, public notice sent out through our, our social media accounts and on our website. Um, but again, the, the Marina will be staffed and, and we'll have staff there to help, uh, with the, the, the boat launches. Uh, our RV dumping stations are all open and available for use. Um, our splash pads will only, uh, will, will, will be open by June 1st. Our baseball and soccer fields are ready. Um, our garbage receptacles and benches in all of our usual locations are in place. Porta potties at all of our, um, parks and playground and sports fields will be installed and in place by the, uh, this coming weekend here. Um, as far as a, a quick capital project update, um, the, uh, two remaining playgrounds to be completed are Leving and Janon Street, and I've been advised that, uh, the contractor is mobilizing and, uh, they've advised us that the project will be complete, or projects will be completed by June 9th. Um, we will be shutting down our, uh, complex, uh, pool and gym. Um, we ha- normally do our, our two week shutdown end of August. We're doing it from May 29th to June 11th, and, and the main reason for that is because we have a capital project for the, uh, um, installation of the new heat exchangers. So we are trying to avoid having the facility shut down twice, once for construction and then once for another, uh, shutdown. Uh, and our shutdown consists of a thorough cleaning of pool or we, we do a lot of mechanical repairs and maintenance in both the gym and the pool and in our showering facilities. So it, it takes us normally a good part of two weeks to get all of that done, and so we'll do the construction part as well, so we won't have to shut the facility down for at least another year. Um, our, our community services staff are also hard at work, uh, uh, creating programs such as line dancing, and we're working as community partners with, uh, the Western St. General Hospital Run for Health, that's going to be held at the museum in June. We're, uh, involved in pride activities and the pride, the upcoming pride parade. Uh, we've got ongoing swimming lessons. We're also working with community groups and volunteers on community enhancement and beautification, and we're also planning for candidate activities. So that's a, in a nutshell, a brief overview of community services. I know it's near and dear to everyone's heart and we thought it'd be a good opportunity to address some of these issues before the May long weekend. Open up to questions, Mr. Chair.
But, Mr. Chair, councillor Restol.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just one question on the, um, garbage receptacles. I had a question about the, um, water station on Corso Road, if there's gonna be one installed there.
We will, we will, because it's been problematic year over year and we'll, we'll make sure that there's a garbage receptacle there, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
In regards to, you don't have a, a tentative opening date for the, uh, the gas, uh, gasoline service at Mini Haha Bay?
Um, Madam Mayor, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, if the water levels, which we think are going to subside, we're hoping that the, uh, gas pumps at the Marina will be open for the following weekend.
Uh, one more follow-up on that, Mr. Chair? Thank you. Um, is it possible to put some kind of signage at the top of the hill heading down to Mini Haha? Because I'm thinking, what if you launched your boat thinking that you're gonna fill it up with gas before you head out and then you have to pull your boat back out of the water because you don't have any gas to get somewhere? I, I just, uh, thinking of the logistical, if you know there's no gas ahead of time, you can swing back into town and fill it one of the, uh, installations. I just would hate to see somebody go through all of that to, uh, not be able to go on their boat.
That's a very good point and we can ensure that there's proper signage at the top of the hill and we'll also talk to our communications folks to make sure that, uh, we convey that message publicly before Friday.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Madam, consigliere.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, through you, um, is the River Valley Dump Station available for trailers?
I was informed by, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I was informed by staff that all RV stations operated by the municipality are in fact ready, yeah, and they're operational, yeah.
See no more questions, comments, concerns? I'd just like to mention, good work to the staff, because I know it sounded like it's kind of coming quickly, spring, there was snow on the ground, the next thing you know, we had beautiful weather and everyone wanted to get out, so they've been doing things pretty quickly. Uh, since the boat launch at Mini Haha will be open, well, the, I know I take a walk by there quite a bit and there's a lot of debris in the boat launch itself, is there any way we could, could at least clearing up?
Mr. Chair, that's why we're, we're advising boaters to take proper caution and precaution. There will be debris in what, pretty well, all of our boat launches. We have had staff go and, and try to, uh, sometimes if it's easily removed, we do it. If not, then we just basically push them out and, and let them, uh, take off, take, take off down the river. Unfortunately, that's the only option we do have, but we, we are making a point to see if we can remove some of the debris on a daily basis. And we, we can with, uh, the resources we have, absolutely.
Thank you, I don't blame you for saying that. But, uh, any more questions, comments? Nope? That ends it for community services.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, we'll just take a motion to adjourn for a recess for 10 minutes.
I need to move on to the second. It is moved by councillor St. Louis and seconded by councillor Restol at approximately eight, 11:00 PM, the motion is tabled for a 10-minute recess.
All in favor? Carrie? Okay, welcome back, everybody. We'll continue with the last item in committee in the hall. The environmental services committee, so I will pass the floor to Councilor Midholme and Chair Environmental Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you guys saw in our agenda, we received a letter from the CCL to remove recycling bins from the park. The removal will add more parking spaces as well as reduce abuse. They suggested relocating it to the living landfill. So I will open the floor to any discussions, questions, comments.
Yes.
Council Corchain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Living Community Center is a grassroots charity and non-for-profit organization. The group is spearheading the development of the multi-use park. So when it was identified through planning that there's specifically some lack of space for parking during the spring, summer months, and also during the winter months with the outdooring being used. I know personally, there's a lot of people from Warren that actually come to Living during the wintertime to actually do them, they now have to park on the road, which increases, you know, some safety issues as well. So it was taken into account at the board level and the letter was provided to the council for.
If I can just say, I spoke with our manager of solid waste this afternoon regarding this and just sort of the evolution of concerns from, you know, from the municipal point of view as far as it is. So, you know, when those bins were installed, it wasn't because there was an increased volume or that any studies had been done that said that we warranted more bins in Living than in any other location, it was just a direction of the prior council. Anywhere that we have unmanned stations can become problematic. You know, it's unfortunate that in some of our areas like Crystal Falls, we don't have any other option, but any unmanned station certainly becomes problematic. There is no problem from his point of view in returning recycling to just the living landfill. We'll be able to, you know, manage the volume and service just from the living landfill if council wishes to make that change in service. And he does absolutely agree that we're taking up all the parking lot by having the bins there.
And to Mr. Craddock's point, with the new playground, all the new equipment, the new development at the Living Playground, we are expecting significant increase in usage and traffic, and those bins will become problematic for parking. And in the wintertime, it will alleviate some of the issues with snow removal as well. So we certainly will see a lot more activity at that site, and it would certainly help with parking and access to the site if those bins would be moved.
Madam Mayor? And it's a question to have credit or whoever. How many bins are located at that location at this time? Next to Council Corchain, can you tell me?
We were there actually yesterday for the parks, I would say five.
I'd say, I thought, yeah, because I think we talked about six, and it fits six in there. Yeah. Okay, and are there bins currently located at the Living Landfill site? Yes. For recycling? Okay, so would the bins actually be relocated, or would we have five bins that might be useful somewhere else? So we don't actually need those bins at the landfill? No. It would not be moving them, it would be?
Correct, there are bins at the landfill, and we would just, you know, manage the volume through the bins at the landfill. I understand that some of our bins at some of our other locations are in need of replacement, and then we would just be able to reassign the items.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you very much. Council Restul?
Thank you very much. I agree with the, seems to almost be the consensus, or I think if we're doing some community planning and growing our community, growing our spaces for our young people to enjoy the outdoors, I don't think recycling bins is probably the best location. As we're growing, as we're changing and evolving, I think it's a good idea to maybe relocate those, and I think it's great if we recycle our recycled bins to, you know, keep them fresh and the ones that maybe need to be on the side, can be on the side. I support the request.
Council Saint Louis?
Through you, Chair. I believe if one of the issues in past, I mean, abuse of the bins and dumping stuff where they're not supposed to and so on, one of the conversations that we had several meetings ago was about installing cameras here at our landfill here in West Nefertin. I think that might just be something that we can look at, at the Living Landfill site also, and look at that possibility and hopefully deter people from doing it, right?
Questions, comments? So from here, we'll take a vote to proceed with.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, we'll have a resolution next time, but if we, yeah, if you want us to do a quick vote, then we'll see where we're going.
Who is in favor of removing the bins from?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Okay, we'll proceed into regular meeting, and the first item, seven point one, is our consent agenda.
It is moved by Council Restul and seconded by Council Tacey. It resolved that the items on the consent agenda for May 16, 2023, be moved as presented.
Okay, questions or comments on these items? Okay, all in favor? Carrie? And, next we'll move to planning, we've got two items here, and I'll pass Madam Kirkpatrick.
It is moved by Council Corchain and seconded by Council Saint Louis. It resolves the bylaw number 202345, being a bylaw of the West Nefertin Municipality to grant draft approval to a plan of subdivision located on part of Lot 3, concession 5, being parts 3 to 5, Plan 36R14822, in the township of Kirkpatrick. That shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, we'll just give the, it on the pile, an overview of the pile that's contained in the planning report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. At the meeting of the Planning Advisory Committee held a week ago Tuesday on the 11th of May, council received a, considered an application to subdivide some land located on Old Highway 17. In the recommendation provided by staff, it was recommended that the proposed lots located on the south side of the Vev River not be approved. The subdivider was amenable to that amendment, and as a result, the committee was able to make recommendation to approve the six lots, which would all have frontage on Old Highway 17 and frontage on the Vev River. All of the lots are in excess of the minimum requirements for rural residential land use. There would be a remaining right-of-way, because the owner still does own land on the south side of the river, there would be a right-of-way reserved along one of the lots to provide access to the other side of the river for that retained lands. And further, there is a drainage easement to be granted to the municipality for existing drainage of Old Highway 17.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on this planning application? Council Pellegrini?
It's Madam Mayor. I've got, I listened to that meeting, and I think there should be two things added to this subdivision. The setback should be increased from the river because of the erosion, not as much as the erosion, but I remember a few years back when the water was high along the Vev, Riviera Vev Street, right in town, the bank gave away about 60 feet from the river, and it went down four feet. So I remember the guy's garage was like this, and it was 60 feet from the river, and it's been there for years and years. So I think the, that's why the setback should be increased to at least 100 feet and have a flood elevation. I remember that year, the ice was hitting the bridge in Burner, and I stopped today and I measured, and it's 16 feet from the top of the bridge to the water. So over 16 feet, because my tape wouldn't reach. So I figured the water went up at least 10, 12 feet. So, and as we saw, I went down the spring, and there was, I don't know, I think there's a few people that went down. There was a trailer underwater, quite a few old cabins, and we just had our meeting, but two weeks ago for the water quality, and for that reason, we should look into it and not wait until we revised the official plan. Because if there was a spill, somebody keeping oil or whatever, that, those old cabins, that's my two suggestions, and it wouldn't hurt nobody, they're all big lots. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Just add on to the water quality portion was, they were mentioning high turbidity and suspended solids at the Burner plant, and that's often due to erosion when water's high. So it's something that's when you create these lots, I'd be worried that they just clear cut right to the shore, and then that's when you get higher erosion, those, any vegetation will help in minimize erosion or any phosphorus seeping out into the water, suspended solids and such. Would that perhaps help our Burner water supply, or would it hinder it?
I just, thank you, through you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to note that the conditions of approval, one of the conditions of approval is a preliminary environmental assessment to look at not just species at risk, but also water quality, and there may be recommendations coming out of that. In addition, there is a required buffering of a minimum of 50% of the frontage of the lot to a depth of 7.5 meters.
Thanks.
Just to clarify on the, on the plan here, it does show that the frontage along the Vev River is currently bush, so they would have to keep trees and to maintain the shoreline along that area, that's one of the conditions, to 7.5 meters.
Yeah, and 50% of the lot frontage.
Okay. And the setbacks from water are the standard 15 meters?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
So that's?
Sixty.
Sixty feet.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, that being said, we can put that to a vote, so I'll give you the, you did review.
I did.
All of us in favor of approving the draft subdivision plan? Can I say, show of hands, two, three, four, five, six. Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Council Saint Louis and seconded? Are we taking consideration, Considere Pellegrini's 100 feet buffer in the proposal? Because that's what he was asking.
It would, it's if consensus of this council wishes to impose a greater setback than what our bylaw provides, that's entirely council's.
Okay. Per view.
I would just like to ask a point of clarification, why abstain from a vote like this, because I issued permits for, this would also associate to the search systems, wouldn't they?
Are you going to make more money from the permits?
I would make more money, and the office would make more money.
No.
I issued a permit.
No.
I do, to that, I do support something like that, based on my experience.
Can we do a redo?
Well, I'm just, my question would be, in the draft conditions, to do such, to make such an amendment, we would be amending the draft conditions to include a, that the zoning amendment shall include a, what would it be, 30-meter required setback?
Is there, there's enough room on those lots, those lots are deep, eh?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're very big.
So I just, so, Council Pellegrini, if you would like to make a motion to amend, is that how it would have to work?
Yes, because the special conditions are an appendix to bylaw.
Okay, so if you would like to make a motion to amend, I would entertain that, and then we would put that to a vote, so I move to amend the plan to a 30-meter setback?
Yeah, I propose to add two things, setbacks of 30 meters, and no buildings should be allowed under at least 10 feet above the river level. As I mentioned, right now, I just measured today, the water is at least 10 to 12 feet under the bridge, and when we had that eye, saw the spring, it came up, ice was hitting the bridge.
I don't, I'm not, sorry, through you, Madam Chair, I'm not really sure what, you're talking about accessory structures, Council Pellegrini?
Any structure.
Well, we do have perimeter shoreline structures like boat houses and pump houses and things like that, which are allowed in the front yard setback.
Well, I don't think they should be on the river, because it's a total different beast.
I think it's talking about elevation as far as, like, are these, do these properties have a hazard zone overlay on them?
No, we have no flood plain, and no, there's no hazard land identified on the Vev except for at the low end, at the, at the east end of the Vev River.
But if I may finish, especially after we just had our meeting about the clean water development on the upper side of Burner, was just, specifically, the last two years, went crazy. So we got no recourse to the rest of the lot that were severed until we revamped the official plan, but now we have the occasion on this official plan to put it in place, and it's going to benefit as much a new owner buying that fan, because like we saw, I saw trailers under the water this spring, and people probably didn't know what could happen, you know what I mean? So, and that's at minimum 10 feet above, because if it's 10 feet in Burner, if you back up three, four kilometers, it's probably 13, 14 feet.
Did you want to?
I was, thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I think that there, I don't think there would be any concern with the 30-meter setback.
That's.
Did you want to?
I was, thank you, three madam chair. I think that there, I don't think there would be any concern with the thirty meter setback for principal structures, but I wouldn't want to, we would be placing a much higher standard on these six lots than on any other piece of property along the river. And I, and I do understand what Councilor Pellerin is getting at and I don't disagree. I'm just, I wouldn't want to make this change without consulting with the owners. I'm not sure. Because like I said, it is a, quite a significantly different standard than what we apply anywhere else in the municipality, on any water body.
And I would just add to that, that I think that my concern would be consistency in the application of the policy. So you know, this is not, does not have a hazard zone overlay, so then to impose hazard rules on them as far as what the elevation of the buildings should be, then what happens when the next application comes in? So it comes down to a similar situation where if the, if the policy is not serving us well, we more or less change the policy, but to, to impose something like this on a developer that's not consistent with decisions that have been made in the past and not consistent with our zoning bylaw or our official plan, it's why this development and not another one. So that would be my, my concern on the elevation. I think it's one thing with the, the setbacks are a more reasonable ass, especially on lots of this size. But the, the building elevations, when it's not zoned hazard, yeah, mark this hazard.
I was just, I was just going to point out that I did note at the planning advisory committee meeting that part of our official plan update will be, I said, given the fact that we had significantly different weather patterns over the last fifteen years, I expect that we are going to be looking at changes to our hazard zone overlays on a number of our water bodies, given the changes in the weather and the storm events that have taken place. So it's very likely that we will get the empirical data from other provincial ministries which are consulted with when we do these programs. So right now, we don't really have any empirical data other than, yeah, the water sometimes gets high.
Sorry, Councilor Rehart?
Thank you, three madam chair. It was just, just as a suggestion, I would stick with that thirty meter setback idea, but the thing about the elevation, it's all clay in that area and once your thirty meter setback, you're quite high already that the water does go up. So I don't believe it will, I think we could probably just keep that there. That's just a suggestion, maybe we only concentrate on thirty meter setback. People typically don't think specifically clay, then they're kind of asking for problems.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend on the floor and that's to amend to add, sorry, change the standard eighteen meter setback to a thirty meter setback on all the properties. Can any other questions or comments on the amendment itself? Councilor Rist?
Through you, madam. I have just a question for Mel, Madam Duchamp. Does this do anything, if we're accepting this, does this do anything on the other side of the ledger in terms of the developer? And if this is what we accept, what if he isn't in agreement?
Well, they do have, when council issues decision, they do have the opportunity to appeal that decision. Should they not accept it? I, I don't want to speak for the developer, but given the depth of these lots, I'm reasonably confident that they won't have any major concern. If their lots were only, you know, a hundred feet deep, it would be different, but.
Councilor St. Louis?
So through you, and I believe that discussion was had at the planning where the developer did mention that most of the individuals that will build in that area are most likely going to build near the road of Highway seventeen because it is an extremely deep lot and it will cost an extremely amount, high amount of money to make just a driveway to get to the thirty meter zone. But that was something that one of the, the gentleman had mentioned, that most of the people will most likely, they might make themselves a road so to launch a boat or whatnot, or not a road, but a trail if you will or whatnot. But he anticipates most of the people, most likely, doesn't mean they will, but most likely will build further.
Okay, so we have the amendment on the floor. Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Okay, I'd like to put the amendment to the vote. Who's in favor of amending to a thirty meter setback from the water? Okay, that's Carrie. Okay, so we're back to the original motion, which is the approval of this plan of subdivision. Now with the amendment as proposed by Councilor Pellerin, are there any other items in the, in the planning report that council would like to address? Okay, hearing no other questions, I'll put the, I'll put the original. Yes, as amended, thank you. So the motion has changed to as amended from the motion that Madam Duchamp originally read into the record. So all those in favor of the motion to grant the draft subdivision plan as amended. Carrie, thank you. Next item, we have one more item under planning and that's some general changes to the zoning bylaw.
It's moved? I'm sorry, it's moved by Councilor St. Louis and seconded by Councilor Cushing. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202346 being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 201445 to adopt general amendments to the West Nipissing zoning bylaw shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed. Through you, Madam Chair, and I will actually.
I was going to start.
Okay.
So these amendments actually came before the planning committee during the last term and I know this because I participated as a resident in the public consultation portion of it. And, okay, I just wanted to. That was a lot of fun.
Well, and three madam chair, you will recall and Councilor Pellerin was part of those conversations too at the time when we had the conversations. Initially, the, there was, there were more changes that were brought, but they were set aside and placed into a different bylaw, but there was some discussions. I brought a variety of amendments based on, I guess, ongoing questions that, that come to myself and to the building official with regard to some of the current prohibitions in our zoning bylaw. So I brought the changes to the planning advisory committee at the last term to discuss whether or not, you know, these, these changes, whether or not these prohibitions or, you know, regulations were still valid. Do we, do we still want to have those things? One of them was, we had a long conversation about shipping containers. We get at least one query a week with regard to can I put a C-Can slash shipping container on my property? And currently, they're not permitted in any of the commercial zones, any of the urban residential zones or the shoreline residential zone. And at the end of a very lengthy discussion, which carried over, I think, three meetings, it was determined that they would be allowed in, they would still be prohibited in the R1 to R4. So in the urban core, you still wouldn't be able to have a shipping container as an accessory structure, but that you would be able to have one in the shoreline residential zone if your lot is one acre or larger and it can't be in the front yard. There was also.
Sorry, you just might want to specify that front yard on water, front shoreline properties is the?
In the water yard.
In the water yard.
So you would have, it would have to be roadside, not in the, in the front yard setback. That was one of the major discussions that was had in that and that was the recommendation of the planning advisory committee. There were other recommendations or other things that were discussed and I won't go through this entire amendment because I'm sure you all had an opportunity to read it. But there was discussion about galvanized steel buildings. The current bylaw does not permit a shed that is that galvanized color. And nobody could remember why that was not allowed, but everybody agreed that, why not? So it was, that prohibition was removed. What else did we have? Oh, temporary uses for, again, for shipping containers, temporary uses in the urban area if you have an open building permit. You can have one on your lot during the construction for storage of your equipment and tools and so on and so forth, but you have to have an open building permit and it's a one-year limited timeframe. There was a housekeeping, a couple of housekeeping amendments I had pointed out at a previous meeting with regard to numbers of dwellings on properties which came to light during the planning file that recently came up that was typos. The rest of it was mostly just addressing little, small typos and, and things that were in the bylaw that we wanted to just clean up. I know we will be looking at the bylaw this year itself, but these were the things that sort of came to mind and that the committee was in general agreement to address at this
Okay, questions or comments on these general changes to a zoning bylaw?
Right there.
And Councilor Gani?
Just one comment that the planning meeting, we did get clarification, you're allowed a C-container in the urban area, but as long as it's covered and has sightings and it's all closed in, you're allowed to have at least a structure, but it has to be kind of hidden finished. Because you did clarify that.
Yes, three madam chair. The, a shipping container as it stands is, you know, is prohibited. However, you can use a shipping container as the frame of a shed and a lot of people do siding and put a roof and, and it, people use them as homes even, but that, that does not prohibit that. It prohibits the use of them just as it is.
Thank you.
Okay, now just to look at the shipping containers. So in the shoreline residential, you may have a shipping container or you may have a galvanized steel building, but you may not have both.
That's correct. Sorry, I missed that clarification.
And they have to meet the regular, I don't know what the lot setbacks are for shoreline residential, but they have to meet the, with the regular, all of these have to meet regular setbacks.
In the shoreline residential zone, you can't have accessory structures in the front yard setback. They have to be in the rear yard.
But the, the actual lot on setbacks are also a little bit larger than in residential than not?
Yes, they're generally two hundred. Two hundred feet?
You know, the setbacks, like the side yard setbacks are three meters instead of one point seven five.
That's correct.
So they're, they're all a little bit larger and they, and any location of any of these buildings would have to meet the yard setbacks that were specified in the zoning bylaw.
That is correct and that, that reminds me and I'm, we'll take up too much stuff. One other change that we did make that was significant recommended was that we had the same setback for accessory structures in every zone, whether it was rural agriculture, whether you had one acre or five hundred acres. And it was recommended that in the rural agriculture zones and the rural residential, that that accessory structure setback be increased from one point two meters to three meters. Because those lots have the sufficient area.
And there was something in the shoreline residential that if it's under an acre, they are not allowed the?
That's correct.
That's, that's great. Okay, any other questions or comments? Councilor Pellerin?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a quick question, Melanie. If you put a C-Can in town and you finish it like a shed, you need a building permit?
Yes, because the trusses have to be engineered.
Okay. Just, just so people know.
Okay, so the motion is on the table to accept the zoning bylaw modifications as recommended by the planning committee. I'll take the show of hands, all those in favor, please. Carrie, thank you. We have no correspondence, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. And first item, seven five A is a word of granular re-circusing quotation.
It is moved by Councilor St. Louis and seconded by Councilor Cushing. Be it resolved that the quotations for the 2023 granular resurfacing projects for the West Nipissing municipality be awarded as follows. Ed Seguin Sons, Alphonse Road, unit price nineteen dollars twenty-three cents. Ed Seguin Sons, Belfeuille, unit price twenty-one dollars twenty-three cents. French River Contracting, Fardochis Road, unit price twenty dollars thirty-nine cents. Ed Seguin Sons for Gautier Road, fifteen dollars thirty-eight cents. Ed Seguin Sons for La Brasse Road, unit price eighteen dollars twenty-eight cents. Le Bell Brothers Excavating for Pierre Road, unit price sixteen dollars seventy cents. Le Bell Brothers Excavating for Canal Road, sixteen dollars seventy cents. Ed Seguin Sons for Roberts Road, unit price twenty dollars and twenty-three cents. And Ed Seguin Sons for Rochon Road, nineteen dollars eighty-eight cents.
Three questions or comments on this item? I'll just ask, at least those are in line with what we've been seeing from lots of these kinds in the past.
So as we sort of get, council bit of a heads up last time, they actually were a little higher than we expected them to be. So overall, the granular resurfacing, that's why we sort of paused on things a week, two weeks ago or a month ago. So overall, the granular resurfacing is a little higher than our budget at these values. However, a few resolutions on, we've got the John Street Rehabilitation which came in under budget. And so overall, right now, our capital overall is still in budget and we've got, we've got room to award these, but they are a little bit higher than we were expecting, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, so any other questions from our members? Okay, all those in favor? That's Carrie, thank you. And the next item is a word of asphalt sheeting.
It's moved by Councilor Cushing and seconded by Councilor St. Louis. Whereas three quotations were received for the asphalt sheeting services in the West Nipissing municipality and whereas council concurs with the recommendations received, be it resolved that the quotation for asphalt sheeting in the municipality of West Nipissing be awarded to Pioneer Construction having submitted the lowest quotation of one hundred six thousand one hundred dollars eighty-five cents, meeting all specifications.
Questions or comments on that item? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie? Just one second, did we miss something here? Oh, okay, that's just the. Okay, and next, exemption, oh, no. Exemption from the fencing bylaw for Chateau.
It is moved by Councilor Cushing and seconded by Councilor St. Louis. Whereas a request for exemption has been received from Jocelyn Buffard and Claude Strausberg for exemption from the West Nipissing fencing bylaw 200938 in order to construct a fence on the easterly boundary of their property at two point one five meters, which exceeds the maximum height of the said bylaw of two meters. Be it resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality grants an exemption to bylaw number 200938 for property at forty-seven Chateau Terres in order to build a fence of two point one five meter on the east boundary.
So there is a staff number attached to that. You have anything else to add on, you know, the recommended? Okay. Questions or comments on this? So we have, we have a fencing bylaw which. Have your, Councilor Cushing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do, has council awarded, I guess, an exception like the one that's presented in the past or is it the first?
This is the first. The first request.
Okay, Councilor Pellerin?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I had the opportunity to meet that lady when I saw Mel last Friday. She was in and we talked outside. I visited her place and I'm, I'm. Je vais continuer français.
Oui.
À cette place, j'avais demandé pour une telle sur de dix pieds. Après que j'entends, j'ai entendu tout l'historique de, de ce coin-là. Je suis cent pour cent d'accord avec qu'est-ce qu'elle demande.
I, there was too many words in there. Usually it's, Dan, do you have one?
I can.
Pretty much any, in this case, he would have built a ten-foot fence after the history that he heard.
Okay.
I guess so.
Okay, Councilor Rist?
You, Madam Mayor, just comments, I don't know if I'd go ten feet, but I certainly support the six inches extra that they're requesting. It is a new type of exemption, but I mean, six inches isn't a huge amount. They're not requesting eight, nine, ten feet and the location of the. They're not requesting eight, nine, 10 feet and the location of the property, which I don't know, I don't think this puts me in any conflict because I'm not selling him the lumber for his extra six inches, but you won't see this fence barely from the road separating. And like Councilor Pellerin mentioned, it's a very undesirable.
Neat situation.
Situation with the neighbor and with the investment that they're putting in for such a small plus for the variance, I'd support it.
Okay, thank you very much. That, Councilor Gagne?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, through you. Has the fencing by law been reviewed in the past 20 years, I guess I could say?
No, it's been the same since 2009 and that's certainly something.
Maybe we can look at to see if we can have maybe a bit of flexibility at reasonable heights, maybe.
Bring back fencing by law?
Okay, any other questions or comments on this specific request? Councilor Revard?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Page 150, they meant they show a photo of the type of fence that will go up. So that also should be taken into consideration why I support this because it is a good-looking fence. Just six inches isn't too big of an issue. If anything, it's actually at their cost also going to raise the value of probably the neighboring home as well, which I don't really see an issue.
Questions? Any more? Okay, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of granting the exemption to the fencing by law for this request? That's Carrie. Thank you. Next one up is 7.5D by law to establish a council vacancy policy.
It is moved by Councilor St. Louis and seconded by Councilor Crochain. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202347 being a bylaw to adopt a council vacancy appointment policy shall come into, an amended council vacancy appointment policy shall come into force and take effect on the date it's passed.
Okay, so we discussed this policy in committee last meeting. Councilor Restool and Councilor Tessier weren't here and I really wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to kind of review and make comment on that because I think it's a pretty important piece that we're putting forward that kind of lays the foundation for how we operate. When we met last time, the general consensus was that this council preferred to fill a vacancy through appointment by application. There were a couple of members who had brought up appointment in the last two years, by-election first two years, but the overwhelming kind of consensus was that we prefer to deal with any vacancies through appointment by application. So with that, just kind of brief overview for the people who weren't in attendance, it would open it up to questions to the policy as has been presented by staff. Councilor Restool?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't here in 2007, but I think they made a sound choice to use. But I, that was the consensus at the time of council last meeting to put that forward as a recommendation. I'd support that as well because I think it's pretty cost-effective and it gives opportunity to those who are interested in joining council and I hope we don't have to use that this term or any other future terms, but it's good, I think it's a good policy to have in place to avoid some of the challenges that the previous council was faced with in filling a vacancy.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Councilor Tessier?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. For the first two years, I was thinking of a by-election as well, but considering the majority, looking at an appointment, I was thinking that possibly we could add as running, you had to add signatures to present your candidacy. Maybe that could be added to the appointment that the ones that want to present themselves would have to have signatures.
In the same manner as a nomination.
Yeah.
In the same manner as a nomination.
Just to allow the residents an opportunity to support that candidate that wants to present themselves or apply.
Okay, I'll just make a note of that for now and I think that's actually really a good idea because we all know we had to run around and gather our 25 signatures as, wow, okay, maybe not all of, did you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so all of us have to give the signatures and it's actually, it's an interesting process and it does, you know, show support from the residents and it would have to be residents of the ward in which they're running.
And the minimum was 25, but then they can get more, then it shows the support that they have as well.
I like that. I'll bring that forward in just a minute as an amendment and. Is it possible to do it one at a time while they come on? As amendments?
I'm making note of them as we go along.
Okay, so we'll do amendments. Okay, any other comments or questions? So, and then I just had one question for you. So the process for replacing a vacancy at the mayor level would be the same, would be appointment by, by application, the same?
Yes, and I think, if I'm not, if I'm, I think with the mayor, there's also, and maybe I did or didn't put it in, whether an exceeded council member could put themselves forward for that. I saw that in some policies where other council members were allowed to put their name forward for mayor.
Well, I would think that that would be a fair process. That would be another, you know, like make sure it actually is open to current members.
There's nothing that precludes, there's no prohibition in this policy?
Not going in. Okay, so, yeah, I would probably want to just put something that got in, so if we're not excluding current members of council, the thing is if the current member was successful, then you'd have to do another appointment process to then fill the seat left vacant by the current member, but I think that that would be a fair.
Yes, in that case, I would have to probably make an amendment because we've got then, in order to run, someone would have to, their seat would have to be.
Yeah, you don't, they shouldn't have to vacate their seat to run though. Like they, they're not vacating their seat. If Councilor Restool, the deputy mayor, decide if, you know, like that, I don't know, eaten by moose tomorrow. You know, if he was, if he put his name forward and was unsuccessful, he doesn't lose his council.
No, but I mean, for the voting and selection process.
Okay.
I'll have to, if that's what council wants, I'm going to have to take that back and that I can't do on the fly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or concerns, sections that might need a little work on this policy? Councilor Crochain?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's just a matter of clarification because I had noted it too, but section 5.4 references section 1.76 and then 1.7.7. I'm thinking it's just 7.6 and 7.7.
Yeah, that's just bad typing on my part. I will fix that.
That's the one that goes away.
5.4.
Good job. Okay, so we've had two amendments suggested. I will have, and sorry, Councilor Tessier, if you'd like to put forward your.
I was just going to say, I think that the change concerning the elected member of council, I don't know if I'd want to make that.
A more resolution.
Yeah, I think I'd like to.
Just redraft.
I'd have to redraft because I don't know exactly how that would go and I wouldn't want to.
Would there be a member of council that would put forward a motion to defer to have the clerk make some of the changes that we've suggested? I would want to get, sorry, just an agreement on the nomination form idea that Councilor Tessier brought forward. Members would be in favor of that as part of the, okay? And again, with current members eligibility to run in the case that the mayor's seat was vacant, that is also agreed upon as a good amendment. Okay, so a motion to defer to the next meeting is okay for you?
I mean, I'm over in a second.
Yeah, you have a whole bunch. Councilor Restool and Councilor Tessier? Okay, defer to the first meeting in June and Madam Deschamps will make the changes we discussed. Okay, sorry, all those in favor of the deferral? Carrie, thank you. Thank you for that. And a tender award for the John Street Rehabilitation.
It is moved by Councilor Gagne and seconded by Councilor Pellerin, whereas three tenders were received for the rehabilitation project of John Street from Courcelto Clark Street in the municipality of West Nipissing, whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, be it therefore resolved that the tender for the rehabilitation project of John Street from Courcelto Clark Street in the municipality of West Nipissing be awarded to Le Belle Brothers Excavating, having submitted a quotation of $1,168,755, meeting all specifications.
Any questions or questions, Councilor Revard?
Madam Mayor, I just noticed on the two pages, there's two different numbers. So the page 167, the number is 1.32 million and then the one above where the resolution says 1.168.
This is 1.3 and this is 1.168.
It's still the lower.
The 1.168755 is.
HST.
Is the, yeah, not accent, that's the correct. Okay. Yeah. And this 1.13, oh no, that was just a mis-tape. Yeah. Okay, so the bid amount we're looking at for the project is 1.168755 from Le Belle Brothers. Thank you, Councilor Revard. Other questions or comments?
I have a quick question through you, Madam Mayor, and if it can't be answered and we can get the answer later, that's fine. I appreciate and I support the bid that's there. Just wondering, I know we talked about this during the budget process, but what's included? And I don't need an extensive list, but I'm thinking of some of the other streets that we redid. Nisho is an example where we had sidewalks and full pave across and, or are we just doing the road as it exists?
No, this one is actually, it's actually pipes in the ground, the road, curbs and gutter, sidewalk, fix the drainage, the whole package.
Excellent, perfect, thank you.
Any others? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie? Okay, so that's it for new business, except for we have quite a large addendum planned to consider this evening. And so there's, it's on your updated agenda. I have it there or your paper package on your desk there. So the first one is the appointment to the board of the Friends of Mas.
It is moved by Councilor Revard and seconded by Councilor Gagne. Be it resolved that Mayor Catherine Thorn Rochon and Councilor Jerome Crochain be appointed to the board of the Friends of Masquinage.
Questions or comments on that? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie? Thank you, Madam Chair.
It is moved by Councilor Gagne and seconded by Councilor Pellerin. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202348 being a bylaw to authorize the transfer of lands described as part of Simcoe Street Plan 35, being Part 1, Plan 36R 15058 in the West Nipissing Municipality, for the consideration of 13,000 plus HST shall come into force and take effect on the date it's passed.
Yes, I'll just ask Madam Deschamps to speak a little.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the Madam Chair rightly pointed out that in my hurry, I forgot to include my memo in the addendum, so I do apologize. This was a request for acquisition of lands that was entertained by the prior council. The current building at the end of, the dead end of 178 Craig Street, which used to be the old Gagne Window and Glass Building, is encroaching on the unmaintained, unopened road allowance at the rear of the property. And they did have an encroachment agreement with the municipality, but for financing purposes and other reasons, it made more sense for them to offer to actually buy the 66 by 66 foot section of the municipal roadway on which the building is, corner of the building is currently encroaching. It will enable them to also expand their parking a little bit. As the mayor had asked the question, the property in design, that whole section of the municipality, although there was a subdivision plan laid down a long, long time ago, that section was never developed because of the ground conditions. It's solid rock all the way up that, that from Cash Bay Road to Sabre Gang. So that section was never opened, that portion of Simcoe Street was never opened. And the lots that front on Cash Bay Road all are 66 by 264 feet deep, so that everybody, there's no landlock. This will not landlock anybody or impede any access by any person to their property.
Questions on this motion? So I'll just speak a little bit. I had actually asked the question to Madam Deschamps about the Simcoe Street and whether it would ever be expanded. So even though the lot show as separate on the diagram, that's on whatever page that is, says 9 of 26, but, oh, because it's the addendum, those are all doubled. So the owners of the front lot that front onto Cash Street actually own the back lots as well. So even though they show as two separate lots, they are, they, again, nobody owns a piece that we're going to have to, we're all of a sudden going to have a lot in the middle of a road allowance, so. And this sale was actually agreed on in principle by the last council and it was just the, doing the legwork of getting the appraisals and.
It got kind of sidelined due to COVID.
Yeah, okay. So that's, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
And this is the second thing. It is moved by Councilor Nichol and seconded by Councilor Gagne. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202249 being a bylaw to authorize the closure of a part of Simcoe Street, registered Plan 35, being Part 1, 36R 15058, shall come into force and take effect on the date it's passed.
So this is just the companion by law for what we just approved to close that portion of the relevant order facility. So questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie? The next item on the agenda is the tender for the Field Outdoor Rent.
It is moved by Councilor Pat A. and seconded by Councilor Gagne, whereas tenders for the Field Outdoor Rent Project were opened on May 31, 2023 by the Director of Community Services and Economic Development and Municipal Clerk, and whereas four submissions were received, and whereas the tenders have been reviewed by Perry and Perry Architects and the award being recommended herein consists of the best price, meeting all specifications, and whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, be it therefore resolved that the tender for the Field Outdoor Rent Project for the municipality of West Nipissing be awarded to Capital Construction for the sum of $1,138,459 plus HST.
Oh, that's, okay, I'll ask Madam Product to speak to that.
Yeah, and the first, just to clarify, your schedule you have with Capital Construction is gone and deep. There was actually a fourth, as the resolution read, the fourth vendor was disqualified for incorrect bidding, so that's why you don't see the fourth one on there, but there was a fourth bid that was disqualified. So as you see in my memo, the bid with the associated costs that have come into the project has exceeded the funding sources that were allocated for, and fairly substantially. However, and I know that we're going to slip back and talk about reserves and how reserves work and all the rest, but we did talk during budget that when we do these transfers to reserves, not, the dollars aren't necessarily used every single year, sometimes it's for future projects and we have capital asset plans for facilities that will come into council as well. So that said, there is actually amounts in the reserve from the community services that were not. from the community services that were not allocated to projects this year. You know, they are just building for future amounts. So there is $640,000 in capital reserve that is unallocated. So it is, it is possible for council to go ahead with awarding this project and get that field covered rink built. The group that's been doing the fundraising has said that they will continue fundraising through this period. So, you know, they may have some additional dollars to throw in there, but obviously not likely significant enough to offset that, that, that figure there. So, you know, we're proposing that yes, we can, we can take the shortfall out of community services reserves. We have some, some projects, not projects, sorry. You know, we've talked about sale of assets this year and so that when we have some of the sale of assets, that we would actually, rather than letting it run through general reserves, we would put some of this back in so that community services kind of isn't behind the ball. I will transfer it to, or transfer the conversation to Mr. Poulin as well, who was talking about kind of the next resolution on the system there as well, potential other sources of funding.
So you'll see another resolution in front of council that the Trillium Foundation granting program opens tomorrow for applications. We could potentially apply for $150,000 from the province. I say that potentially because we haven't had discussions with the program managers. I'd like to discuss that in more detail with them to make sure that the project is in fact eligible for additional provincial funding. They do have stacking rules, if you understand granting programs. So that's why when we get to the discussion about the resolution to apply to Trillium, I think if for some reason the Field Outdoor Rink project does not qualify for Trillium funding, we still want to get permission from council to apply because then we'd shift our attention to the Cash Bay Outdoor Rink and hopefully get the maximum 150 and be able to build the entire rink in Cash Bay with, or not entire, but at least the $90 on, on, that would alleviate some of our contribution, that we could then shift more money back into reserve that would compensate from having to take 400 and change from the community services dedicated reserve.
Oh, sorry, I was deep in thought because it's a lot of money. I'll open the floor to questions or comments on the memo and the resolution. Counselor Rebar?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just with the bids, the other two are at a very similar number, while one's on 1.5. So I was just wondering, like, they're bidding on the exact same architectural design there or have they?
No, it's, it's, it's bid on the, it was a tender, so they, they must bid on, you know, what's in front of them, which is some of the problem, the one that got disqualified. So, yeah, they bid on what is there. They had the opportunity to offer alternatives, but you, they bid, all the prices here you see are bidding on the exact same design.
And my follow-up question would be, is there any way that, say, if we were to award, that they could work with the architect to try and find a way to bring in more into our budget costs? Or is that, I don't want to sound like I'm the guy in the room trying to take away, but.
Yeah, we, we have had that discussion with the architect. We're limited as far as what we think we could incur savings without really changing the scope. It's a steel building. We basically, our engineer, our architect designed it with cost in mind. It's just, this is what the market will bear. But we will certainly look. We have a contingency built in there. Hopefully, we don't have to, you know, dive into our contingency and could potentially save money there as well. But with construction, you never know. But we will continue having those discussions between the architect and our contractor once we get the project underway to see if there's a potential of savings. That's always at the top of our mind when we, when we do construction projects or capital projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Nichol?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, sorry. I know it's a lot of money, but on the flip side, it's exciting to see we're at this point, after the many years of dedicated volunteers in the Raise the Roof Committee, they fundraised and advocated for a long time for this. And I think that the upgrades will extend the life and that it's going to offer year-round use to the facility for all of our wards. So I just wanted to add that comment.
Thank you very much. Counselor Restol?
Sweetie Madam Mayor, I appreciate and I respect the approach the staff are taking where we can look at other sources of funding to offset this or even look at another project that we've already approved and use those ones here. It's a good strategic way to kind of cut down costs if we can, if we're successful. But for the project itself, I think if we do have reserves available and we do have partners at different levels of government who supported this significantly in some cases, our local financial institution as well, being there a couple of minutes late, but being there for the announcement a little while ago. It's a hub for the community, right? And it's not just an outdoor rink. It's going to be used in the summer, it's going to be used for everybody around the region. I know when my kids were going to the outdoor rinks, it wasn't just here. They'd go to Field as well and enjoy it there. So I think we have the opportunity to enhance one of our hubs within the municipality and we have commitment from us as funders as well as our government partners. I think I'd support going ahead with it.
Counselor Tacey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. How long has, has this, let's see, plan of putting a roof on the rink, how long, like how many years?
Twenty nineteen, I believe.
It's been a number of years.
Pre-pandemic.
We got the commitment from KJ, pre-pandemic, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and if we look and if we delay, costs will still increase. So it's just a matter of getting on offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gane?
Madam Mayor, I know this is a great project, but I just want to make sure that we need that $450,000 somewhere else first before we commit to the covered rink and field. Budget are tight, everything's going up. And is it really like, I feel, I don't, not that I feel bad. I know we're going to get that covered rink eventually. Just want to make sure with staff that this is the right recommendation and there's no emergency that will come down in the next two years where we're going to have to cut something else, which is maybe more urgent. So I guess.
We can do a bit of a tag team on that. So it doesn't impact anything that's ongoing this year, right? There's any of the projects this year. And Community Services has obviously a lot of facilities for maintenance and, and, you know, demands for, for, for capital. But a lot of those, you know, the community service is different from public. A lot of those are discretionary things that are always going to come to council for the types of projects that council wants to support. So there's absolutely challenges with our facilities. None that are going to say that we've got to come next year and I'm going to tell you that, you know, that we're, we're losing a building or going up that I'm aware of at this point. But it will absolutely mean, you know, different choices next year and the year after. But, you know, how council might prioritize all of the next four years. I couldn't put that in front of you right now, Counselor Gagne. I don't know.
Yeah, Counselor, if we'd have a crystal balls as far as emergencies and whatnot, it'd be an easy job. That being said, we do have building condition assessments. We do have an asset management strategy that we will be bringing forth to council. We do have aging infrastructure, whether it's our arenas or our marina. We will require larger investments moving forward. And all that being said, council has identified this in their term plan and you want to look at the existing properties and make strategic discussion or decisions based on what we should continue maintaining. Example, the Cash Bay Trailer Park is one that this council has made. So if we'd have sound knowledge of what we can expect as emergencies or priorities in the next couple of years, it'd be an easy answer, but we don't. That being said, it's council's decision to invest or not. And this project has carried a lot of momentum. We've seen a lot of work being put into this. And I guess the pandemic did play a role in this because if we would have gone to tender, as Counselor Tacey had said, three years ago, we wouldn't be looking at 1.1, we'd be looking at a much lower number. But it's brought us to 2023 and here we are. And it's, it is an asset that will be used or can be used by all of our residents and our visitors as well. So there's no, there's no clear-cut answer. And I completely understand everyone's position. It's just that we need council to make a decision on whether we want to invest 400,000 in this project or delay it, but I, I do understand that delaying it will probably not save us money.
Yeah, I'm only worried because we're, municipality is investing $600,000 of taxpayers' money that could potentially be used for maybe more emergencies or better things. I'm not saying the field, covered field rink is not important. My kids went there and they loved it. But I just want to make sure that if we need the money somewhere else, like maybe we should at least try to apply for the Trillium Fund before we actually accept this. Just, it's a lot of money.
If I may, that being said, if, if we were to apply and wait for an answer for Trillium, if the Field Outdoor Rink will be considered by this program, that means we're definitely delaying the project. Because in my experience, we probably won't hear back from this funding program because the application deadline, I believe, is June 14th. We probably won't get an answer for another three, four months. So then we're going to lose another construction season. And then we're, we're on, let's say they do approve 150,000, then we've got to, I don't think any contractor will hold their prices more than 30 days. So then we're going back to a tender process and we could see an additional cost and increase in construction. So again, it's not an easy answer to provide, but that's the answer we have.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments, Counselor Tacey?
Just a comment, and I respect what the staff are saying, that, you know, they don't have the crystal ball to see in the future and that I agree 100%. However, there are certain things that we do know. And I mean, Mr. Poulin spoke to one already about the Cash Bay Outdoor Rink. And that's something that should be replaced due to health and safety. And that's a discussion that we've had in the past. I'm not opposed to this option, but I believe what Madam Mayor mentioned earlier, I would love to see some sort of guarantee that any assets we do get rid of, that some of that money, some of those funds are put back into community services so that the projects that have been approved, like the Cash Bay Outdoor Rink, that is on our plan for this year, that is something that we can definitely look at and try to do it this year. I don't know, Mr. Poulin knows better, I don't know how much this costs. So if we're providing, if we've got 640,000 and we're providing 450, that leaves us, you know, close to whatever the math is. So, I mean, if the outdoor rink, I would not want to see us build the outdoor rink in Cash Bay also and dip our, to go from our 640 down to 30, 40,000 left and hoping for the Trillium Fund to put that money back and hoping for assets. But what I would definitely like to see is, at the very least, if we're going to support providing that kind of funding to the field, that there's some reassurance that we're able to make sure that the projects that are spoken for already and not stuff that, you know, we hope in the future that it's taken care of and it's looked after.
Well, if I think of it a bit, that might make, make people feel a little bit better. So as, you know, both Mr. Poulin and I have said, you know, as we kind of roll through, that the summer will bring the facility asset management plan to council so you can kind of see it mapped. We're putting just shy of a million dollars into reserve for community services right now. There'd been a little bit of an extra budget that was declined. In the immediate next few years, from, from what I've looked at with the, the asset management plan, you know, and when you look at asset management plans, you're always going to see an asset, like a financial deficit, you know. Our roads, our buildings, we always see the financial deficit. But when we look at the, the kind of regular routine maintenance, we look at how we're funding repairs and maintenance and we look at what our capacity to get done, both within our staff and our contractors, I'm not seeing concerns over the next couple of years on our routine facilities and our, our routine maintenance and keeping things up. There are a few, as I said before, you know, council will always face discretionary spending with projects within community services. And there are a few of those that are, that are out there and larger ones that are, that are out there. But in just maintaining sort of the next couple of years, I'm not seeing concerns from dipping into the reserve here as far as, you know, what is kind of looking like it will be on the books in the next couple of years.
Counselor Restol?
Just one more quick comment through you, Madam Mayor. I think the important thing, it's important, I'm not saying it's not with the amount that we dip into reserves, but there's a huge number on the page as well that's coming from other government partners. And to put this structure into place within the community and pay essentially 50 cents on the dollar, I don't know how many opportunities we're going to have for that to come around. And it's not like that 500,000 can be moved around. It's dedicated to this, this opportunity here. So I think that's another reason why I support the opportunity that's in front of us. Because I wouldn't want to send that.
Yeah, I don't want to send that check back.
Counselor Rebar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree very much with what Counselor Restol mentioned. I thought adding on to what Counselor Gagne mentioned, 600,000 over the whole project does equate to 3.5% tax as well. So I always think that that's a good idea to mention there, like with dollar value and the tax increase that we just mentioned. But then something else is, on the positive side, is a field. I don't, like, they don't, they never got a slash pad or all these other things that other communities may have got or got to fundraise for. And I haven't seen, correct me if I'm wrong, this is plain, but much, I guess, investment in terms of capital for community services, things like, and capital in field. So this would be a great thing that they could use year-round. They have their outdoor tournament, their carnival, it might enhance their carnival. It'll enhance their summer programs, maybe markets, things like that. So I do see a lot of positives out of this project. And with that funding, to me, that's why I'm definitely leaning towards supporting it because as Counselor Restol said, the 50 cents on the dollar. To get a facility like this for just over half a million dollars of taxpayer money seems like a pretty good deal. We'd all wish it would be less, for sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll just add to what Chris said. I think, you know, I, I know nobody wants to spend 400,000 more than they thought they would have to spend on anything. However, since the election and seeing what's happening in field, I've been really inspired by the sense of community that you see in field. So, you know, you have all kinds of groups that have really worked together to really push for this project from the Chevalier de Colom and the church ladies and the, the fire, volunteer firefighters and the Raise the Roof Committee and the Economic Development Committee and the Golden Age Club. And there's really, really great energy in the community overall. I've been to a couple of the breakfasts there and it's just a really good group of people that are trying to do the things for the community. And as Counselor Rebar and Counselor Restol said, you know, if, if we choose not to go forward with this project, that's half a million dollars that we have to send that to the provincial government. So, you know, even though when we look at the number of 1.26, you know, our portion of that is 50 cents on the dollar and that's, that's a pretty good deal. So that's both of the things that I will say in regards to this debate. Any other questions or comments before I put this to a vote? None, all those in favor of the resolution toward the contract for the Field Outdoor Rink project?
Carrie, thank you. At this time, I would entertain, there's two options. So we can move all these items to the next meeting or we could take a motion to extend curfew. And a question to the last two, one, two, three items. I promise I won't make a real curve.
Almost.
Okay, so a motion to extend is on the table by Counselor Rebar. Do I have a second here, Counselor Kershing? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. There's no leave scheme tonight.
There's no leave scheme until September. We have you both back full time.
We have you both back full time. Okay, so the next, next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is item nine point five, and that is authorization to apply for funding for the Ontario Trillium Foundation.
It is moved by Counselor Gany and seconded by Counselor Pelleri. Be it resolved that the Director of Community Services and Development be authorized to make an application to the Ontario Trillium Foundation.
Any questions or comments?
Counselor, sorry.
Just a point of clarification, Madam Mayor. As as I believe in your packages or your agenda, it does specify Field Outdoor Rink. We will look at that. Like I mentioned previously, we will talk to program managers to see if the project is in fact eligible for funding. If not, we're asking council to approve a funding application. And if it's not going to be for the Field Outdoor Rink, I'm very confident that the Cash Bay Outdoor Rink will qualify. So in any instance, we will submit an application and we will try to get the maximum amount of dollars.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Rovar?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if this is kind of what you just mentioned, but would it just be best to just aim towards a cash bay rink right now? Instead of, even if it does fall under the program of the field rink, do you think there'd be some hesitation to receive that funding because they would know we already received that half million? So maybe just.
Sweetie, Madam Mayor, that's a good point as well, whether, you know, we, as long as we get the one fifty or the maximum amount. It's just that they won't fund a hundred percent of the project. And I think the cash, cash bay outdoor rink, we could maximize more. We could get to the limit of one fifty if we are able to apply for the Field Outdoor Rink. Because the Cash Bay Outdoor Rink, I believe, the total amount we've budgeted is a hundred and fifty, so we won't be able to get the full amount. So if we can get the Field Outdoor Rink qualified, I'm confident we'll get the one fifty maximum. If not, we'll get as much as we can for the Cash Bay Outdoor Rink.
What can we add to the Cash Bay Rink?
A roof. A tractable.
Okay, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My hesitation with that is it would delay the project potentially getting started. And if we were to apply it to the Cash Bay one to begin with, the funding would be more available to the field rink and then you could.
With my, through Madam Chair, if, Madam Mayor, through my experience, if we the minute we apply for the funding, they stamp the application and any cost incurred after the date of application is eligible to get funding. So it should not delay our project. And the fact that we have gone to tender and we have a firm number for the Field Outdoor Rink, hopefully they'll consider it. If not, we'll get the application in ASAP for the Cash Bay Outdoor Rink. And then any costs incurred afterwards, we should be able to recoup our costs. But I, if it is going to delay the project, I agree that that will focus our our energy on the south side of our municipality.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll call that to a vote. All those in favor of authorizing staff to apply for Ontario Trillium Foundation wherever it goes? Carrie, thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a tender award for the interior leasehold improvements for the West Nipissing Community Health Center.
It is moved by Counselor Gany and seconded by Counselor Pelleri. Whereas request, whereas tenders for the interior leasehold improvements to the West Nipissing Community Health Center were opened on May the tenth by the Director of Community Services and Economic Development and Municipal Clerk, and whereas three submissions were received, and whereas the tenders have been reviewed by Perry and Perry Architects and the award being recommended herein consists of the best prices meeting all specifications, and whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, be it resolved, the tender for the leasehold improvements to the West Nipissing Community Health Center for the municipality of West Nipissing be awarded to Vanoss Construction for the sum of one million, three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so there is a report within your package there and I will pass for Miss Craddock to speak to. I'll just give you a quick, so we we have these accepted projects from time to time and you won't have seen it on your capital plan when we did budget. It's not actually our project. It's kind of the same thing with Stats Canada upstairs as well. But because we're the landlord, we take care of actually awarding the contract and doing all the contracted admin and things like that, which means that council still approves it. So this is not a taxpayer funded project. We're recovering the full cost from the West Nipissing Community Health Center. We are just facilitating the the project for them. And this uses most of the remaining space in that facility.
And and
Any questions?
And we do have a commitment letter from the West Nipissing Health Center that they they will.
They've accepted the terms.
They've accepted the terms and of the full amount.
One question. Do we charge an administration fee on top of the, because we are using our staffing resources?
So it 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 depends on the 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 project. This one, we're actually having managed by an external source and we are charging that back to them.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of awarding this tender? Hands. Carrie, thank you. And our final item on the agenda for this evening is the
It is moved by Counselor Rovar and seconded by Counselor Nicole. Be it resolved, Director of Community Services and Economic Development be authorized to purchase two half ton pickup trucks for the Community Services Department for the combined purchase price of one hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred sixty one dollars and thirty cents. I suggest to you.
Okay, so there's a little bit of a background story provided in the package that you want to see to Madam Mayor. Again, just, you know, we have a procurement bylaw and we have followed our procurement bylaw. We followed our procurement bylaw twice and and not been able to secure the the vehicles. This is not just a West Nipissing issue. Fleet is difficult to obtain right now. And so when we go through the procurement process and have to wait for that stuff. So in the time in between, Mr. Poulain has gone out and looked for vehicles that are on the lot right now that meet our qualifications and meet our our budget and has found two vehicles locally. And so because we have previously awarded and it didn't work, we're just sort of going to skip going back out to tender again if council approves it and just go ahead with purchasing these these two vehicles. They're both twenty twenty twos, correct? Yeah, that sort of meet our specifications for the ability to haul. They'll they'll put on all our accessories and things like that. And we're just going to be just under our our budget amount, which is good news to. Any questions or comments? I have a couple. The hundred and seventeen thousand dollar budget, that was the original budget laid out in twenty twenty one for the purchase of these vehicles.
That's what council had approved and we had purchased those two vehicles at at that price, yes.
Okay, and how do the specs on the vehicles you intend to purchase or would like to purchase compare to that of the ones that were specified in the RFQ?
So the the main difference is they're both four by four half ton pickup trucks, quad cabs. They both have towing capacity required. So essentially, they're all the same. The accessories, we specked out the same accessory list of the back wrap, the beacon light, all that is 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 standard for us. The big difference is one of the vehicles that we're looking at purchasing is a V six and not a V eight. Towing capacity is a bit less, but we did look at the specs of our cargo trailers and our lawn cutting equipment and it would still meet our requirements. So and I guess V six would be easier on gas.
So this purchase price is for one V six and one V eight?
Correct, or half ton pickup.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted a little bit of clarification because we weren't here for the original decision. If Counselor Pelleri?
Yes, they could. Madam, I'm just curious. Did you go to Dodge and Ford?
We looked at all dealerships and this one met all of our needs and within our budget. And they have them on the lot. So we know if council approves it, we can secure the vehicles tomorrow morning. And we're actually going to have vehicles and not be in a queue and wait for delivery of vehicles and this fits our budget.
Yeah, we're definitely yes, they should be all V six. Because you don't need a V eight to all the your.
You're true, but the V six, the towing capacity seventy five hundred, we're getting close. We're getting close. When we're when we're hauling our big Kubras or our John Deeres and the cargo trailers and the passengers, we're getting close. Well, where the V eight is twelve hundred, twelve thousand, five hundred towing capacity. So we're mindful of that, but you're right. In this instance, we'll have three of our fourth fleet trucks for community services, our V eights and have towing capacity exceeding ten thousand pounds. So we're going to be okay. So the V six will be of good use and, like I said, easier on on fuel as well.
Sure. Okay, you?
Question? Anybody else? Counselor San Luis?
Is a quad cab a necessity for your?
Yeah, Counselor, it absolutely is, especially in the summertime when we're grass cutting, we go to River Valley or we're bringing students with us. It's essential that we have quad cabs. Yeah.
Counselor Pelleri?
Yeah, do you like the old race jump in the back?
Good, but.
Any other real questions? Okay, I would put that to a vote. So did you read the? So all those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Okay, I thank you all for your patience in getting through the so I have nothing more for my mayor's report. And I will let Madam President close out the meeting.
It is moved by Counselor Rovar and seconded by Counselor Nicole. It resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty three forty nine, being a bylaw of the West Nipissing municipality to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on the sixteenth of May, twenty twenty three, should commence force and to effect on the day this passed.
All those in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counselor Rovar and seconded by Counselor Nicole. Be it resolved that the meeting of council held on the sixteenth, twenty twenty three be adjourned.
All? All those again? Carrie, thank you.